I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda, I'm going to call on Chief of Police John Hickman, who has a presentation that he's going to make. Chief?
Thanks, sir. So, as a leader, it's always exciting whenever you get to see professional development of people that are entrusted to your care. And today, it is a great honor to be able to recognize one such officer. We recently held a promotional assessment for Sergeant here at the police department. We had several great candidates, but one rose to the top and was the clear leader of the pack during that assessment, and that was Officer Jordan. Officer Jordan started his law enforcement career in Cortez in Colorado. Recently, I actually spoke with some of his former coworkers and supervisors. They spoke extremely highly of Officer Jordan and his ability. He was there for a couple of years, and then he moved here to Beatrice, and he's been with us for about four years now. While he's here, he's earned Officer of the Year, been a field training officer. He won the MAT Award, which is recognized across the state for contributions to DUI enforcement and keeping our highways safe. He also is the current reigning Mr. Homesteader and raised the most money. I've never seen a homesteader in the past.
It looks pretty good in a hat.
He also holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And so, it is my honor to recognize Officer Jordan for his promotion to the rank of Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Get some more pictures.
I think some of the officers over here want to take pictures, too. So, keep that smile on. Congratulations again. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on October 17th, 2022, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasures report of claims in the amount of $1,058,903.22. F, approval of Basel report of claims in the amount of $53,480.69. G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, resolution number 6954, executing the annual certification form for the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the period of October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022. I, resolution number 6955, appointing Hannah Painter to the City of Beatrice Library Advisory Board. J, resolution number 6956, executing the agreement between the city and continuum employee assistance to provide consultation, training, and assistance to the city to improve job performance and to assist and rehabilitate employees with personal issues and problems. K, resolution number 6957, executing the HDHP Amendment Number Eight and OAP Amendment Number Eight to the City of Beatrice Board of Public Works Employee Health Plan regarding TMJ jaw disorders. N L, resolution number 6958, entering into a pole attachment agreement between the city and United Private Networks as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Any item that any member wants removed from the consent agenda? Gentlemen, Mr. McLean?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved. End your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing to consider the rezoning application of Wes and Tina Garland for lots 7, 8, and 9, Pemberton Block Edition, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Gage County Parcel ID Number 013955000, commonly known as 1726 Court Street, to be rezoned from general commercial to residential commercial. Tobias?
So, 1726 Court Street is the old State Farm Insurance Office that's on the East Court Street side of there. The Garlands also own the apartment complex that is to the north of that location. What they're looking to do is maybe do some type of multifamily thing where the State Farm building currently exists. To do that, they need it rezoned to be residential commercial rather than general commercial. Residential commercial with a special use permit would allow a multifamily unit to be built there. So, that's why you see the rezoning coming before you tonight. Planning zoning did have it, I heard they had, excuse me, had the hearing tonight, and they recommended approval.
So, they're looking at taking down that building?
Eventually. Step one is to get it rezoned, and then step two, and I don't have a timeframe for me. I can't tell you it's going to happen next week or next month, but that's what their plan is.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary?
That's kind of going backwards from what we usually do. I mean, we didn't want a spot zone, and we always never wanted to take, I think the history of this is correct, we wouldn't take a, make that a lesser, for lack of a better word, a lesser zoning thing when you have a general commercial, to go back to residential on one of our main thoroughfares. I'm not necessarily against it. I just, it just seems a little odd that we're...
Exact same conversations that were had at the planning zoning level. First off, since the portion north of it is already zoned residential commercial, it's not a spot zone, you're simply just expanding it. But yes, there was conversation there of, the practice has been to keep the highway corridors zones general commercial. And we've had some discussions as of late of, is that the best practice? Do we need to sit down and reevaluate some of those and maybe go back and look at the zoning options on those highway corridors? And maybe a more of a residential setting is more appropriate than a commercial setting. So, I think you'll see that conversation come forward in the upcoming months.
So, if somebody else down the street wants to go from general to, once we start this, we're going to have to continue to do it if somebody wants to, aren't we?
Not necessarily. I think it depends on the different locations. But one of the things we talked about the planning zoning level was, let's sit down and start looking at which areas make the most sense. If everything should be, remain commercial, or if everything should go residential, or are there some different breaks in there? And all of us are pretty familiar with the highway corridors and kind of maybe what makes sense of more of a residential feel versus a commercial feel. But I do think you'll see that conversation come forward here in the upcoming months.
Ted?
I guess I'm with Gary a little bit. I'm just a little curious as why we're changing. The term you were looking for was a lesser restrictive zone. So, and that's, you know, lesser to more, or more to less. I guess I wouldn't have nearly the, I'm not going to vote against it. I wouldn't have nearly the problem with it if they owned the lot adjacent to the east, and I don't know if they do. I think that's with Easy Lee's building. It is, yeah. And because there used to be a house there, and I thought that they bought that when, then when they took it over. If they, if we knew the house was going to be, if the structure itself is going to be taken down and they were going to build something there, because I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought they could build a multifamily, some kind of apartment in that residential, in that commercial zone, that that was considered part of the commercial. So, I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't have nearly the problem with it if they said, yeah, we're going to take it down, we're going to build an apartment building, it's going to be access to the Court Street. But I'm not going to vote against it. I'm just saying that's kind of where I was going to be. And we probably will have that same question, but it's tethered to two, it's tethered to a commercial zone to the east and tethered to one to the north. So, it's not really a spot zone. It's not really. But anyway, that's where I'm at with it. So...
What about parking? Is there going to be parking in the back, or there's going to be parking in the front, or?
Again, we've not seen site plans as to what exactly he's looking for. I think he's still in design phase of this, so I can't talk to you about if there will be an access of a highway, whether parking will be. But currently, there are parking for those other apartments than the rear of those apartments.
Site plan is going to determine whether or not they're going to need excess parking, and then this body controls that.
Right next door.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 PM. Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is Resolution Number 6959, retaining Eisenstein Mallenchuck LLP to represent and help negotiate environmental insurance coverage claims on behalf of the city against liability insurance coverage issued to Dempster Mill Manufacturing Company, Dempster Industries, Inc., Dempster Industries, LLC, and their various predecessors or successors relating to Dempster's history operations in Beatrice, Nebraska.
I move that Resolution Number 6959 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Frayland, that Resolution 6959 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So, Eisenstein Mallenchuck, what they do is they go out and look at old insurance policies, and then they look to file claims against those insurance policies and try to recover money. We've worked with these guys in the past. I think they did some looking for us on the former manufacturing gas plant site. They did some digging there, couldn't come up with anything. But then they saw through some news article that we were looking at the Dempster site again, and so they called back up. When Dempsters was taken over here recently, if you remember, the large trove of documents were taken out to the Homestead National Monument. They found online, started searching through some of those. We had Taylor go out then and look, pull different documents, and sure enough, there's some old insurance policies out in those documents. And so, that was enough for them to come back and say, we think there's something here, let's explore it further. And so, the agreement tonight would be to retain them to do that. It's a contingency fee. They take 35% wherever they collect. They do not charge you for any fees unless they are able to recover some money back from the insurance company. And then those funds will be used for site cleanup.
Well, thank God that Homestead National Monument had digitalized all of that stuff.
Well, they weren't digitalized.
They were?
They were not.
So, that was really hard then, huh?
Yeah. Previous individual who occupied that facility took them all out there, which was good. And this isn't going to cost us anything, other than if they find something. Any comments from the public? I'll write your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6959 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6960, executing the assignment of option agreement between the city and Gage County Area Growth, NGAGE, whereby NGAGE shall sell, assign, transfer, and otherwise convey to the city all of NGAGE interest in and to Gage County Parcel ID Number 004148000.
I move that Resolution Number 6960 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by McLean, seconded by Frayland, that Resolution Number 6960 be passed and adopted.
This is an 80-acre parcel. It's in the northwest portion of our community. It would be just west of Precise Fab or the Hattry, that section that's up there. NGAGE had secured an option on this parcel of ground about a year ago, and it has the ability to have that assigned, that option assigned to the city. NGAGE has approved that assignment. They've signed it. It's what you see in your packet tonight. The $2,000 that the city's paying NGAGE for the options, the same amount that NGAGE had paid for the option originally. So, you're just making NGAGE whole for what they had done. A Phase One study's already been done on the property. That's been completed. No issues were there. We have until December 30th of this year to exercise this option. And if you were to do so, the purchase price and the option is set forth for those 80 acres at $1,001,2 million. So, $1,120,000.
Questions? Comments? So, really help our inventory. We've got about 20 acres left out there.
Correct.
And keep selling property, and that's a good thing. And so, I think this is really going to be something that's going to help our future and provide some vision for our community. Any comments from the public? I'll write your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6950 has been passed, I'm sorry, 6960 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6961, entering into an engagement letter for professional services between the city and Kettle Hut Real Estate to provide an appraisal services for Gage County Parcel ID Number 004148000.
I move that Resolution Number 6961 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6961 be passed and adopted.
So, state law requires that anytime the city buys a parcel of ground valued at more than $100,000, we have to have an appraisal. And so, we just signed an option to look at acquiring that parcel of ground, which obviously would be more than $100,000. So, we have before you tonight an engagement letter for Kettle Hut Real Estate out of Fairbridge. Come over and do an appraisal on that particular piece of property. Their fee's $1,100. We got proposals back from about three different companies and chose Kettle Hut.
Questions? When's the last one we did? We just did one...
That would be the Schwaninger property that we bought for the well.
The SRF program. Any comments from the public? All right, end your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6961 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Beatrice, Nebraska by changing the zoning of the property legally described as Lot 7, 8, and 9, Pemberton Block Edition, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Gage County Parcel ID Number 013955000, commonly known as 1726 Court Street, from general commercial GC to residential commercial RC.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-39, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and that said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 22-39, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 22-39 by number the first time, ordinance Number 22-39 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-39 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-39 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance 22-39 be passed and approved. Any further discussion, gentlemen, from the audience? End your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is an ordinance conveying real estate described as lots 20 and 23, Gage County Industrial Park Second Edition, to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, owned by the city, to Kenny Holdings LLC.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-40, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 22-40, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 22-40 by number the first time, ordinance Number 22-40 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-40 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-40 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance 22-40 be passed and approved. Tobias?
So, what we have before you tonight is an ordinance, and then coming up next is a resolution to enter into a contract to sell these two lots to Kenny Holdings LLC, which is Precise Fab. And the two lots that we're looking to sell would have a purchase price of $52,696.
Is this pretty much in line with what we've been charging per acre?
Yeah, I think, correct. I think if you do the math, I think it's about $10,500 an acre, which is the same amount we sold some recent ground up there for.
Other questions from the audience? End your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 22-40 has been passed and approved. Next is Resolution 6962, entering into a contract for sale of real estate with Kenny Holdings LLC.
I move that Resolution Number 6962 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that Resolution 6962 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? End your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6962 been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance vacating the following described real property, that portion of Edgemont Avenue adjacent to Lot 1, Block 20, and Lot 6, Block 15, extending westerly to the center line of the alley lying adjacent to said lots, except the north 23 feet of vacated Edgemont Avenue, and except the 23 feet of vacated Edgemont Avenue.
I move that said ordinance be given the number 22-41, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and that said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 22-41, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 22-41 by number the first time, ordinance Number 22-41 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-41 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-41 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance Number 22-41 be passed and approved.
Again, kind of a multi-steps here. First one here is to vacate and agree to sell some ground, and then the next one is to actually sign the contract with the Westfall and Pauquet. This is Edgemont Avenue. It's down about Fifth Avenue and Belvedere Avenue in the Belvedere portion of the community. We had vacated a portion of Edgemont Avenue or Edgemont Avenue in the past and had already sold parts of those off to the neighbors. We got approached by the Pauquet about buying the remaining portion that was there. We looked at it. We saw no reason that we needed to keep that parcel of ground. And so, what we have before you tonight is each one purchases half for $1,000 of what's left there, and we will retain the necessary utility easements across our utilities that go in that area.
Questions? Anyone from the audience? End your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 22-41 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance conveying real estate owned by the city to Ann D. Westfall, and Jerry A. Pauquet, and Michelle L. Pauquet.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-42, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and that said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 22-42, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 22-42 by number the first time, ordinance 22-42 by number the second time, and ordinance 22-42 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-42 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance 22-42 be passed and approved. Further discussion needed, gentlemen, from the audience? End your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Ordinance 22-42 has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution, Resolution Number 6963, entering into a contract for sale of real estate with Ann D. Westfall, and Jerry A. Pauquet, and Michelle L. Pauquet.
I move that Resolution Number 6963 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 6963 be passed and adopted. Further discussion?
Just wanted to see how many times you guys kept the vote on this.
Got to cover our bases. Anyone from the audience? End your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6963 has been passed and adopted. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Aaron, come on up. Give us your name and address. That'd be great.
My name is Aaron Shum. My address is 17323 East Hackberry Road, Philly, Nebraska. However, we do own the property here as a business owner in the city of Beatrice. Reason I'm here today, I would like to propose consideration of an ordinance to put in place fair practices for purchases of city property when there's more than one person obviously interested in it. The other thing, I would like to be still allowed to make a fair offer for that property due to, basically, it's an illegal contract from everything I've been researching. Everything in that, not everything, okay. Most of the stuff in there, there's a lot of illegality is going on in that contract from last week regarding the JCPenney Building. So, first off, in an email, give background, because I know some of you guys weren't here, I basically put an offer in, and I was told on the email that the offer would be submitted to the city council. It became apparent at the meeting last, or a couple of weeks ago that evidently, I don't think the city council ever heard that offer, from the sounds of it. So, and like I said, I was told, once I found out there was another offer, which I did earlier than the meeting, not, not just the Friday before when the agenda was posted. I knew about this long before, that there was another offer, and I asked, I would like a chance for a counter offer. And I was told I would be able to do a counter offer. And that was by Mr. Templemyer there in a meeting at his office or in the Public Works Building. So, basically, what my plans were is I would have wanted to put a, like, kids playground slash like Dave and Buster's into the JCPenney Building. I know the city's looking for having the downtown be an entertainment district. That's why you're doing the study to move the Highway 136. You want an entertainment district. I do know that the mayor did state on Ask the Mayor that this could have been handled a lot more appropriately. The other thing is, he also stated on the week prior to that meeting that you guys had entered into a contract to sell that property to 3FIL LLC. So, more of the background. Earlier in the year, I put interest in buying that 323 Court Street. City purchased that property for $65,000. They sold it for $1. They waived the landfill fees for that property. They gave them a grant for $70,000. They also gave them a grant for the sidewalks for, I believe, $37,000, and they offered them TIF financing for 15 years, which granted, those grants are there for bettering the public, which my offer included using some grants, but according to Templemyer last week, I asked for other funding options, which that's there. Why not use it for people that are trying to better the community? So, I expressed interest in that building, and I was not allowed to even put an offer in at that point. So, they told me that the Hydros had put interest in it before I did, and they were going to continue down that path because they had put so much work into it that that's the way they were going to go. And at that point, when I heard that, I spoke to a city person. I go, okay, I'm interested in the JCPenney Building if you're going to play it that way. They're like, we don't own the JCPenney Building. I was like, no, you don't yet. But when Hydros put interest in that building, they didn't own that either. So, now back to 517 and 519 Court. So, basically, they purchased it for $5,000 plus all the city roofing contracts. That building has been cleaned out, as everyone here knows. However, I know for a fact there was no asbestos inspection done. I walked through that building. I know there was asbestos in there. The city has been in trouble for doing and without asbestos inspections before. Catlin's Building, if none of you are familiar with, which I figured you probably would be. And that was all put into the CND dump, which everyone knows asbestos is to be bagged and put into a lined landfill. The other thing is, the, everybody that was downtown for the last two weeks has been breathing in that dust from them demolition, that property, and that dust may well have contained asbestos and is... And that dust may well have contained asbestos and is affecting everybody driving by and everybody that has been doing business downtown. So also, another thing is, on that sale, you guys are in violation of State Statute 16-202, which says you must publish the terms of that sale for three consecutive weeks in a public newspaper. That has not been done. To me, I feel this is favoritism. Due to the fact that my other job, which many of you are probably well aware of, but I'm here as a citizen, not as that job today. But I feel that's part of the reason why I'm being not favoritized for reference that because I've stopped city trucks before trying to make them at least follow the laws as they are. Nobody's, nobody is above the law. So, uh, let's see. The other thing is, there's numerous Open Meetings Act violations in this. You have the Open Meetings Act published right up there. So Executive Session only says that real estate purchases may be talked about in an exonerated session and also contract negotiations and other stuff. But in this situation, real estate sales are not allowed to be talked about in closed session. So you're in violation of that statute, which is actually between 84-1408 and 84-1414. The other thing is with the Open Meetings Act, the meetings minutes are not to be posted any more than 10 working days after the meeting on your public or webpage. It's 15 days now since that last meeting. They're not posted. The other thing is, the agenda needs to be posted in three locations and listed in the meetings minutes. They're not listed in the minutes for any of your guys' meetings. And it's supposed to be in three conspicuous locations throughout the city, available to public viewing. So, all of these are actually misdemeanors. And I ask you, which I know you're not going to answer, who's responsible for breaking all these laws and misdemeanors? According to the Open Meetings Act, the county attorney and the attorney general shall prosecute. As your attorneys will tell you, "shall" means they will prosecute these. If anybody makes it light to the county attorney or the attorney general's office, they need to follow the prosecution of these acts violations. You guys are also in...
You're in just about five more minutes, okay?
I got one page left. So, and you're also in violation of the procurement laws here. Procurement laws are designed for preventing corruption and favoritism. Any of your purchases or things over $30,000 require three sealed bids. This, obviously, for the roofing contracts part of that, you guys didn't receive any bids. You just handed them and awarded them $2 million worth of roofing contracts and it's going to cost the city more than $30,000. It does not fit into any of the exemptions listed in the procurement laws. You can look it up yourself. I'm going to keep this going. It does not fit the emergency clause due to the fact they're waiting till spring to even start any of these roofing contracts. Therefore, there is plenty of time to get lots of different estimates and go with the lowest bidder. I also feel it could be possibly insurance fraud at this time. Reason being, he said he's going to do them for the cost of the insurance is going to pay them. However, if you go through the bidding process and you happen to get a heck of a deal and it's thousands of dollars less than the actual, you know, cost of the insurance was going to pay, the insurance is only on the hook for that lower amount. You're still liable for your deductible. It's the law. It's required. So I view that that's, to me, a violation of that and possible breaking and doing insurance fraud, which I have not confirmed that one at this time. Let's see. I also feel this possibly could be favoritism because Mr. Temple Meyer sits on the board for Flowing Springs. That's what I've been told. He basically awarded all the roofing contracts for Flowing Springs to Kraus Construction, which is one of the members of 3FI. To me, that's a conflict of interest. So, basically, what I want to say today, there's two mayoral candidates up here. One campaigns on it just makes sense and the other one says, the people have no trust in our government and wants to fix that issue. Tell me what makes sense to you and what takes steps to fix these unlawful acts that are prevented by the city. Listen to what the people want. That is all I got.
Thanks, Aaron. All right, our next meeting is going to be on November 21st in these chambers. And with that, Mr. McLean?
I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:35 PM for protection of public interest to discuss real estate and potential litigation.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the city go into closed session at, what time did you say?
7:35.
7:35. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.